For those of you that may not have ever been here, let me explain how we operate right quick so you can keep up with us should you need to. I will call each case by case name and case number. Staff member will come to the lectern, give us the request and staff reports. Once we have heard that, there will possibly be discussions and/or questions amongst the board members or back and forth to staff. Once we're satisfied we understand that side of it, then I will ask if there are, is anyone, excuse, anyone here in support? Or if anyone would like to speak on behalf of the request? If so, please come to the lectern, give us your name and address for the record. Uh, once we have heard from that person or multiple people if the case is such, then we will possibly have questions and/or discussions. Once we're satisfied as a board, then we will, I will ask if there are any persons here in opposition. If so, if there's opposition or questions about what's being requested, please come to the lectern and give us the information. Normally, we will act on the request here today. However, there is provision in the bylaws that should we feel like information is lacking or parties need to talk, we can postpone until the next regularly scheduled meeting. Uh, we do have a sign-in sheet in the back. If you have not signed in, in the back, would you please sign in? First case we're gonna call is, uh, application two oh one six oh two Ray Washington. Is that the correct one? I would have my temple.
I, you do. There are two cases, Mr. Washington is the first.
Okay, I haven't been right over there.
Mr. Washington is the first case. This case is one that y'all don't see a lot. It's what we call a P-Luck application. That, um, there will be a question at the end. It stands for Previously Existing Land Use Certificate. Remember that, you get ten points if you didn't pay out that. Um, it's basically for non-corporeal uses. Mr. Washington owned, operated a neighborhood food market on the corner of West Street and West Magnolia Street at the address of five twenty-two West Street. It's just a shillie less than a fifth of an acre, zoned R six, in operation for decades. And I don't know why my, there's a year. Um, you've got Mr. Washington's food mart, you've got a couple of churches and a barber shop on the four quarters. So you do have commercial uses, albeit not the commercial zoning, except for the barber shop across the street, which is community commercial. You've got Mr. Washington's food mart, um, small building, about five hundred and fifty-two square feet, no affiliated parking. If it were built today, parking would be required, but built years ago, parking apparently was not required. Um, adjacent property, you've got churches, you've got residences, you've got a barber shop slash hair salon as well. Mr. Washington owned and operated the store until about, until twenty fourteen. What a P-Luck does is gives him the opportunity to ask to reestablish this use. If it's operating legally at the time of the LDR was adopted, which Mr. Washington's food mart was, as long as it keeps continuously operating, it's not an issue. Unfortunately, in twenty fifteen, it was not operating. Did not have a business license, though mitigating circumstances, the business not operating. Because it was out of operation for longer than a year, he wouldn't like to operate it. Unfortunately, he has two choices to get it back to operational status. A, ask for the P-Luck. B, go through lane review, go through rezoning, things of that nature to reestablish it. P-Luck was the easiest way, for lack of a better word. Staff understood that it's occupied four quarters for commercial uses. It's a neighborhood market. It's not a Walmart, it's not a big box retailer. So the impact on the houses are gonna be very minimal, no parking. So most of his tract is, is gonna be your neighborhood, walkout, snacks, gyms, whatever. Um, very little impact on the neighborhood. We understand that it needs to stay that way. So we're recommending approval with two conditions. A, that there shall be no, let me get these accorded. And that the building shall not be, um, off, shall not be enlarged or expanded. Any changes to the site, such as improved parking or driveway, need to be specifically reviewed and approved by the city engineer to determine the impact upon the site as well as the neighborhood. And there shall be no outdoor storage and no freestanding signage to keep it as a part of the neighborhood. Staff recommends approval of those conditions. Any questions?
Anybody got any questions about this case? Mr. Washington, I'm assuming you're Mr. Washington?
Yeah, yes.
Is there anything you would like to add?
I just, uh, wanna get it back up and put it in the neighborhood. You know, it's, it's, well, half that, half that house was up over there. Close to school, therefore, we're from a corner going, and one right in front of the range here, so. Get that, a wall of traffic, you know. Neighborhood there, they, they have a little pool, and they didn't get off the block, you know, when you open. They say, well, I'm tired, and there's a wall, people walking on boxes, so, put them in my traffic, wall, wall of traffic.
And just a mild application, what were the circumstances that you had to shut it down?
Well, I, I, I work here, I'm retired, so, I'm, I'm back, so, I work in Atlanta, too. So I'm retired, so I'm doing that full time.
Okay. Any other questions, Janice?
I have one. Do, would you like to have signage on the building, somewhere on the premises?
Yeah, all signs I have right now is on the roof. I got, I got a sign built on rooftop.
Keep in mind that the condition is for no freestanding signage.
Okay.
We can work with him on, well, if he does have some sign or a sign.
Yeah, on top of us, on rooftop of us, right there. That's all I have, you know, so far, you know, but, uh, actually, since a few minutes ago.
Can he put a sign on the side of the building?
Yes, thank you.
Yeah, I'm gonna add that to the list.
Okay. And keep in mind that those conditions are staff recommended. If you would like to give him the opportunity to have a freestanding sign, and you're so inclined to approve it, you don't have to approve that condition.
Okay. Not sure you've got a place to put it, it's on the side.
Right.
It's not because he can have it on the building, right?
Yeah, right, I've got, I've got, I've got, I've got, to put them outside.
And honestly, his, his, his parcel is so, his building is so close to the road that if a freestanding sign could potentially be an option, there would be a potential, his building's here, very close to the road. Freestanding sign would be either more likely here or here.
Freestanding sign can get expensive and, uh...
Yeah.
I, I actually, I actually do have a question. Is this a regular standing sign, or is it electric at all, is it?
Well, I don't have sign at all, no, I don't have anything. I'm, I'm sorry, I have this one that's on the roof now.
Right, I'm saying, is that one, uh, is it fluorescent at all, is it, you know, if any electricity?
No, 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 no.
It's not, it's not lit? It's not lit?
No, no, the sign is on the roof, no. Well, as a matter of fact, well, I got, I got lights, you know, bringing on for it now, you know, I got lights on each side of it, you know, that's.
Okay, that's on the, uh...
Right, right.
Okay, okay.
I, I have a question about, uh, no outdoor storage. If you had a storage building, and they had cooler in the outdoor storage building, you could, you just can't have a something that's racks of stuff outside?
Technically, according to the LDR, outdoor storage includes loose items, whether it's, you know, you go to some big box retailers, like how about kiddies swimming pools and lawn garbs and the grills. We consider that outdoor storage for now. If it was put in a sweat and accessory structure, we still consider that outdoor storage. Because the LDR for the outdoor storage is both unenclosed and enclosed.
So, so, well, you're saying I, I can put a storage building like, I have, you know, spare rack, and I can put other storage buildings back?
If, if, if we go strictly by the LDR, outdoor storage is defined as both unenclosed and enclosed.
So we can, cannot have a storage building if we were to say no outdoor storage?
Correct. Now, in addition onto your building, which, that would, that would open up some other hoops in our, if you...
We've already said, you've already recommended do not enlarge the building, and it's also...
See, but I have a lot of, I have racks and stuff, you know, I, 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 I put racks and stuff, I'm, 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 I'm still a building.
But, you know, honestly, we recommended those conditions, but to, with the intent to keep it as minimally impacted, to minimally impact the neighborhood as possible. But if you would like to get him the opportunity to have a freestanding sign or to have outdoor storage, you're welcome to remove those conditions.
Is there any space on the, on the backside?
Yeah.
Oh, yeah.
In the back, yeah, I, I, yeah, I mean, I, I definitely, I, I, I plan on putting a storage building, a little small storage building, so I have a lot of racks and stuff, you know, I do racks. And I need somewhere, I did need somewhere to store, but I, I put everything, put everything inside the store.
Now, go ahead and mention this. His block is a little bit less than a fifth of an acre. For accessory structures, they have to be at least ten, ten feet away from the side of your parking line, and then at least fifteen feet away from the building. I know your backyard is vacant, but I, you know, I do not know the dimensions, and I don't know how much wiggle room, so...
Yes, you're right, I, I got a little dump like this, I got plenty of it in the back. I got, I got, I got a morgue, and I can yell at the dog, the morgue, so it's, it's, it's about ten feet.
Tracy?
Yes, ma'am.
Can you figure, with this building being so close to one quarter of his land, can you figure out if we would have, that would set that to fit some sort of storage building, is what you're saying?
I don't have the information. I have to go back to my office, and I don't, I don't pull nothing really.
Okay. Right, other question. Is there a standard size, is there a standard size of storage building?
That's a good question. Honestly, I don't know.
Y'all need something, something just small, all I need is something small, you know, there you go.
I guess it's based on the, the, the land space, like, you have enough land space, that's probably the issue, you build, depending on how much you have.
It is, it is based in part on the size of your building. His building's about five hundred and fifty square feet. He could have a storage building that's bigger than half the square feet of his building.
He could have a ten, he could have a ten by ten.
Right.
And a ten by ten is gonna fit easily in the back.
Yeah.
So could, could we not?
Let, let me ask a question or two here for general information. When do you anticipate opening this up?
Couple months.
Okay. So, if, if we were to postpone action for thirty days roughly until the June meeting, to give you time to figure out how much lots you got, how much setback to work with, and how much building you want, wanna put in there, and can you afford to put that building in there? And bring that information to us in June so we can decide whether to include that in this or not? Because once we do this, if we incorporate, there shall be outdoor storage and no freestanding signage in here, one or both, then he's dead for at least a year, 'cause he can't come back for a year minimum.
Right. Could we not make the recommendation that he be allowed to have storage as long as it meets all requirements of setbacks and current LDR not to exceed two hundred and seventy-five square feet now?
That is, that is an alternative. In theory, if you wanted to put a, put an accessory structure in that was too big or too close to a parking line, he even needs administrative areas or he'd be...
Come back.
Yes.
That, that's what I was trying to do, avoid locking in where he couldn't come back. Appreciate that. Okay? Any other questions, any other discussions? Is anyone here in opposition to this request, or is anyone here that has any questions about what is being requested? No ghost in attendance. Any contact to your office concerning this case? Ladies and gentlemen, any other questions, any other discussions before I ask a question?
I would just like to say that I had previously been in the store before Colts. And I was happy on the day that I was, 'cause I was campaigning in. Couldn't get something, we didn't print that, so. It's important to have a neighborhood store. It really is. So I'd like to make a motion that we approve this, um, with condition number one, the building may not be enlarged or expanded, but not with condition number two.
All right, do you want to expand that into a limit or restriction?
Well, no, that, that he'll just follow, I mean, he's under the conditions of the LDR. If he's gonna put an accessory store on, it's gonna be, meet the setbacks and, and be of the size that it should.
Uh, small.
Add that to the...
I, I, you intend to incorporate freestanding signage as well, or just the storage building?
No, he, he's, he's, he can have a freestanding sign in my mind if he wants. I mean, I don't think he's probably gonna want, he's gonna pull my fire outside of the building.
Yeah.
Okay, I just wanna make sure we give him, give him as much as he wants.
Just condition number one, he can't make the building any bigger.
Right, I appreciate that, so.
Okay, I have motion on the floor, Mr. Portland, Portland, to grant the request as presented with stipulation number one, building not to be expanded or enlarged, and such as that, no parking driveways. Do I have a second?
A second.
I have second, Mr. Alvarado. All in full favor, please raise a hand. You're unanimous, good luck with it.
Thank y'all very much.
All right. The next case is APP two oh one six dash oh three, Crossing Jordan Baptist Church. Yes, ma'am.
This particular request is for Crossing Jordan Baptist Church. It's located toward ten one South Street in R six single family zoning district. The property is about three acres and contains about ninety-seven square, ninety-seven hundred square foot church. The reason the applicant is here is because R six zoning districts allow for signage, monument signage, and, let's see, in large than twenty-four square feet, no taller than six feet for institutional uses such as churches, like that nature. The applicant went what we call a variable message board. One of those signs that, that are computer controlled to reflect, you know, certain messages, whether it's dates and times of services, or a special speaker, or something like that. It's a lot electronically controlled, rather than the manual reading boards where you have to take down letters, uh, new ones. Those are only allowed in commercial zoning districts, not R six. That's what the applicant is here. That is a schematic or post schematic of what the applicant is looking for. Church is an existing sign, so, um, adjacent property is a combination of uses for residential, community factor, and commercial uses. We understand that there are commercial uses nearby, but we also understand that there are neighborhoods as well, single family homes. We recognize the need as well for more modern signage, if you wanna call it. So staff are figuring requests, recommending for approval with two conditions. Number one, that the variable message board panel may occupy no more than fifty percent of the total public area of the sign. So partial static panel, partial electronic message board, variable message board. And to kind of keep with the intent that there are neighborhoods on it. The second condition would be that the variable message board may change, the message may change no more than three times a nap. Any questions?
What was the current, what was the current sign?
That I don't know, I'm a, I'm a messenger when I was out there. Do you wanna wait until the applicant?
I, I have a question about, um, the, sort of in my mind, the reason why we have electronic variable message signs is twofold. One is it's, they're easier to change. And two is that you can get several messages to a person who's driving by, um, you know...
They're in, in...
In a, it, you know, they have to be there a certain amount of time, but, um... I would have to drive by three times in an hour to get all three messages? That seems like it's sort of being kind of hard on getting the message out.
We, we do understand. The intent was to, to, there are parameters in which messages are allowed to change. Every ten, twelve seconds, the message can change. Trying to balance that, the ability to change frequently more often with the fact that there are neighborhoods, single family residences, or rent. Now, whether we strike the Rock Tower, I'm not sure, but the board can adjust if they need to.
Okay. Any other questions, any comments at this time? You'll ask the gentleman when he gets here, he knows, I didn't know.
Mr. Hugby?
Yeah, I, I did notice, um, I actually went around here today. I did notice that, like, almost cross street, have that range of structures, warehouse cross street, uh, on the other side, it's a daycare, on the other side, it's some construction buildings, a sheet metal place, it's actually...
It's a very diverse...
It is, it is. It's actually more commercial than I seen in residential.
Well, and, and the church owns several of those lots that are on Mildred Street, two grand square feet.
Any other questions or discussions? Anyone in support, please come to the lectern, give me your name and address for the record, please.
Uh, my name is Ronnie Mathis. My, uh, street address is twelve forty Ponderosa Drive, Los Angeles, Georgia. I'm the senior pastor of the church.
Okay. Anything you would like to add to what has the staff has presented to us?
Uh, more than, uh, I, I'm really trying to, um, get our church up, up to date in the twenty-first century, you know. I think I've caught maybe two or three colds due to that sign and the weather. But, um, it's something that we've been basically planning on doing the last five years, and we just decided it was time to do it.
Okay, your question about the sign.
Do you think that, when you know the size of that sign?
Um, I think the height of that sign, um, just the sign itself without being on a pole, I'm looking at just the sign, uh, it's probably four by six feet, four feet by six feet. But now, the way they have it in, in the, in the posing sign, it takes it probably six feet off the ground, maybe the top of that pole to the, to the ground. 'Cause I'm five nine, it's up above my head when I stand, stand up to it, so, right there, when you see that, it's probably about, let's see, the five to the six feet from the ground, but that's not, that's just it being imposed. 'Cause you'd notice the bottom of the sign, um, you know, there's a leeway between the sign and, and actually the ground.
So the sign that you are wanting to replace it with is gonna be about the same square footage that the current sign has?
Um, pretty much, yes, yes.
Is it scrolling in the sign?
Yes, sir. That's, yes. That's it, right there.
Is that actually a little bit bigger than what we can permit?
Well, that's why I was asking, 'cause I, I had some notes that, when I, when I looked at that, it was a little taller than six feet, and appeared to be a little bit more than...
It's a little bit bigger than what we can permit?
I think the objective for getting it up off the ground was because of rocks and moors and stuff with that LED sign. Um, you know, where kids just can't come put their hands on it. I think that's what, uh, Mr. Jordan and I talked about, you know, wanna have the LED sign down, to the worry and it's touchable.
How high are you proposing?
Um...
What, I mean, right there says a hundred inches.
And keep in mind that I can't approve anything taller than six feet.
Did he give you what it, well, that's, that's what, that's what it's gonna be, six feet, six feet, yeah. Uh, whatever he submitted to you, I, I don't have, I just brought, I didn't bring my other documents, but, it's, um...
That was given to me by Mr. Jordan, and he's showing something that's a hundred feet, I mean, a hundred inches, sorry.
Yeah, so...
Basically, eight feet.
Yeah.
A couple of feet taller than that.
Eight feet four inches is a hundred inches.
Yeah.
What can you give it up and down in administrative areas?
Um, I think it could potentially a couple of feet taller, but not even think of...
So you could give them variance?
I'd have to go look at what exactly the parameters are, but it's definitely not more than a couple of feet.
Right, but if, if, if he's coming at six, and you can give him a variance to eight?
That is a potential.
It's a potential, okay.
Matt's the one who considers those, and since we're approving variants, I would, when you take that back, I won't stick for that.
Okay. I, I have a question about the property that's on the corner of Cypress and Mildred. Um, I know that you own the lots that are in the middle there. Do you, does the church own those lots on the corner, or are...
We own, we own three oh seven and three oh five. Three oh nine is owned by Mr. Edwards. So we own the two buildings.
So the, the, this, this one that's on the very corner, that you don't own?
No, we don't own that, that's all on the state of it. That's three oh nine, Mildred Street.
And, uh, can we go back to the sign again?
Sure.
That's a scrolling message kind of LED border. Is it gonna be the one where every, um, pixel can be a different color?
No, it'll be, it's, it's gonna be, all, all of them are gonna be red, it's gonna be black background, red.
So is it gonna be scrolling, or just, uh, you know, services?
You see one, it, it, it's like a blink in and out, it's not scrolling, just blink in and out.
And the LED variable message board regulations prevent scrolling, flashing, and blinking. So you're getting scrolling.
You can't scroll, correct. You can only flash, you cannot flash.
You get burgage here, and you get more burgage, and you get more burgage. You can't have scrolling burgage.
And it can't, when it comes up, it can't go flash, 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 flash.
Right, right, right.
It comes up, you see the message, it goes away. Comes up, you see the message, it goes away.
You see a lot of that scrolling and flashing, blinking, out, you know, I'm saying that technically, it comes...
Yeah, we see a real lot of that, uh, like... I'm, okay, so, um, I'm still... If it says, um, "Special Speaker, Dr. So-and-so, Sunday at eleven", that might be something that it would say. And then twenty minutes later, it would say, "Please join us, Sunday at eleven", and then twenty minutes later, it would say something else? I mean, I'm, I'm still trying to get the whole three times per hour thing.
I understand. We were trying to allow some change, but not an exaggerated amount of change. We're trying to balance. I'm not sure we struck yet.
The limitation is there to defeat the current requirement of having the sign digital.
I got a question. What's the public policy behind having the message board taken? You know, it's, uh, you, you message in an hour or something? Versus the digital billboards that flashes in every five seconds in front of the drawer, drawers?
We understand, and it goes back...
Which, which, which one's more of a distraction to the driver? I think that'd be less, less distraction.
I see your point, probably so, yes, sir.
Well, I mean, keep in mind, the board has a pretty broad capability, pretty broad powers to do what the board feels like they ought to do. So that's one of the things that we could talk about, is what's too little, what's too much? What, what will we let them do, what will we authorize them to do? Same thing with the, the size of the bolts, the size of the sign, the height. Staff recommends, and the LDC says, this is what they can have. Uh, they can ask for a change, and it's up to us to decide, is what they ask for okay? Or do we need to hold the line where we are allowed, or do we need to find a reasonable point? All right?
Yes, sir. Okay. I have one question. So I drive past there pretty often, because I go to have Ted. And, um, how often do you now change the message? Every, every week, every day, twice a day?
Well, we, we were doing it maybe two or three times a week, but, uh, I came up with the solution, um, that, okay, we, we just put everything we need to put on the board that's gonna accommodate what's going on Tuesdays and Sundays, and this, let's stay for now. Uh, we've done that for the last, probably five, six months, but before then, uh, we would have somebody changing it on Tuesdays. Um, we used to change it, we used to change it every day with a word for the day, 'cause a lot of people come in, we're gonna give them an inspiration, a word, um, but that, that was years ago. Um, my, my objective is basically not to have anything flashing, scrolling, but we would like to minister to people. but we would like to minister to people, you know, in the morning time with the scripture. David, you know, with the word, nothing that's gonna flash, nothing that's gonna scroll or twist, but we wanna be able to, that they get the word. Now this sign here has three lines, so we should be able to get pretty much everything on it from the first sight. But then there are times when we have special stuff going on, we may need to have something on the first scroll, blink, flash, whatever we were talking about, and then something that comes in later, you know, just depends.
Can you keep the sign on, on?
Yeah, it stays on. We've never, I've never cut it off. He had some weather came and hit it with a tree limb or something, that's something I talked to you about too. But it, it stays on. Matter of fact, you can go buy that now, it's on.
Is the reason that he's here based on just the size of the sign?
We can't permit, I think we can permit now, I think we approve and permit now for him to have the variable message board because of the R6 zone. If he was commercially zoned, yes, I could. But the reason he's here is because of the LED variable message board.
Okay, so surrounding him is all Oprah and her, and he owns these lots here, so if he wanted, he could do rezoning and become commercial. Then what would he be able to do by rights?
If you have a bigger sign, seventy-five square feet, twenty-four feet tall, and honestly, this is the route that we're gonna vary into rather than rezoning.
But the rezoning route would have been probably ten of them.
That, that not, that not called. All I know is that you're in that right, and that Dr. Amathus pursued this, probably the reason.
He's in the middle of F1 and CC. I mean, a rezoning, that would, that would be crazy, not to recommend.
And honestly, Gretchen, it's partially governed by the character areas, and I don't know what character area this is. If he's in a character area, keep in mind that I don't remember any rezonings in this meeting area in the last little bit. A character area is, is something that allows, there are neighborhood character areas that preserve neighborhoods. It doesn't allow commercial living districts in the green room. There are commercial, there are commercial character areas that don't allow residential, letting you know character areas. This zoning pattern was set many years ago. I don't know what the character area means. I don't know if the reason why Matt said in the variance range of the zoning room is because of the character area, or because of the character area issue. I don't know. It might be in my heart of view.
It's more commercial.
Oh, yeah, it's industrial, and it's adjacent to commercial.
Just with that, keep in mind, the zoning pattern was set years ago. The character area might be a problem, it might not be a problem. I can't tell you that just yet. I understand the question, and I understand the concern.
Okay, now I'm not here. Okay, any other questions, discussions?
One, one other thing, can you go over to the sign, the big one sign? Right by there, the picture, the picture there of the sign, I don't know if this is the place to discuss this much, but there was a tree that has fell on that sign three times. And when we go back with the new sign, we're gonna be doing with the tree, because it's, it's the limbs, it's just...
That's, that is something you'd have...
I just wanna make sure we've loaded up.
Okay. Any other questions, discussions? Anybody else here in support? No ghost. Anybody here in opposition or have a question about what's being requested, can contact your office. Okay, ladies and gentlemen, you've got the meat of it, I think. Any other questions, discussions before I ask for a motion? Can we get a motion on this request?
I make a motion that we approve following staff's recommendation, however, only condition number one, fair enough message board may, I know that more than fifty percent of the total copy area of the sign. And not that second thing.
Okay, any, any reference to height and size? Because what's drawn does not meet height and size requirements.
And honestly, I'm not sure the board has the capabilities to make a very, or to grant variants to copy size, because all that was advertised was... All that was advertised was from the LED variable message board. She can add...
Okay, if... She can do it administratively, if we give them the sign.
That is a potential to do administratively.
Right, and if whatever, if it cannot be satisfied administratively because it was not advertised and not specifically denied, he can turn back around and come in and say, "I need a little bit more", and it would be another application for another variance. He would not be prohibited for twelve points.
Yes, sir.
Now, in that, in that, in that another application, is that another five hundred dollars?
Yes, sir.
I'm afraid so.
Yes, sir.
Well, we need to screen that out now.
Well, but we can't do that because it's not advertised at the time that this was...
She should be able to do it administratively. We, we can do a, we can't give the sun, the moon, the stars administratively. Potentially a couple more feet, again, potentially. It might be a...
Well, here's the solution to that. You tell, you go and decide on what's the height, that I can, that's what we're gonna do. We don't have to keep going, you just tell me what I can do, we'll do that.
Okay, yes, sir.
But if, I don't want it, I don't want it the minimum, I want it the max that we can do.
And the tallest you can have is a six-foot sign?
Okay, with the addition that she was talking about, that you can give me some additional move?
Then we'll, we'll talk after, I don't have my regulations in front of me. I can't tell you right now that if I, that if we give you two feet, I can't, I don't have those two miles, I'm sorry, but we can talk after.
But we have some flexibility between the six and the possibility of what you can give me?
Yes, sir.
Okay, without having to come back to...
You're, you're looking at eight point three right here.
Okay.
And she's offering you six, so there's probably some...
Yeah, I mean, if we hit the seven, I'm longer on the three five, I'm a little tired with the boxes.
It is an application thing. There's an application similar to what you filled out here.
Even with what you're talking about now, the discussion between the six?
Yes, yes, sir.
Would it be five hundred dollars?
Hey, there is a hundred dollar thing for administrative areas.
Why don't we just, why don't we just make them add to the motion and just give them the seven feet?
That's not, it was advertised because they didn't ask for it.
But we can't do it...
Because it wasn't advertised, should anybody in the neighborhood come back and say, hey, "I didn't know you were gonna allow us to get bigger and taller, otherwise I'd have been here in the opposite direction".
So basically, what, what Mr. Jordan asked for was one hundred, one hundred inches?
That's what, he didn't ask for that.
He didn't ask for it, he just said this is a draw.
And your application was for the addition of a variable message board.
Yeah, but the drawing says one hundred inches, so what?
We didn't get that into what we drafted in there.
Oh, we drafted it in there?
For the, for the, for the, the middle of the application, yes, sir.
So, so can we grant that based on your findings, if you're chopping mad or whatnot? Can we just go ahead and put that in the motion that we could grant the eight feet, but based on...
Mr. Hogan, okay, I would, I would rather not. It's a separate process, and the eight feet may not be something we can take to the bank. I'm not sure exactly of the exact parameters.
Tracy, if we do, um, thirty dollars, could the height of the new sign be worked out with the re, added to it?
That would be a question for Matt.
Re-advertised to keep him from having to pay a new application?
That would be a question, huh? If you would like to wait a minute, if Carmella could go get that, that would be great.
Yeah, I got time.
Please, Carmella, I can...
Thanks for my hand. He's trying to be a good steward of his client.
Yes, it's not my money, it's their money.
You didn't know God gives money?
Yeah, he did. God taught me all my money didn't mean anything. He read scriptures.
Only the root of all evil is there.
Let me say, he was sitting in the white seat.
Why, just getting ready, can we call Mr. Jordan and ask him if that, my question, the height of that sign, was he...
Well, I'm, I'm not as worried about the height of the sign as I am the physical size, because that variable message board might be limited to certain sizes.
If we postponed for a month, Pastor, would that be a hardship on him? So that we could get some more information about, you know, you can tell us what, what your options are for size sign, and you could talk to Tracy about the height.
No, I wouldn't, I mean, it wouldn't be a hardship, Loz, I want to pay additional money.
I don't know. There may be additional money required because re-advertising would have to be done. I would, I would think that that would have to be... Well, not that it would be for a hundred dollars on the administrative side.
But it may not be as hard as it did.
But then we could find, but we could find out, we wouldn't be making a decision here today that would limit him in some ways.
That, that is possible, yes.
Hold on, we're waiting on Matt to talk each other's... So this, this is one of the things, that if the applicant doesn't give the information to staff correctly and in a timely manner, and yet after everything has been done, the picture comes floating in.
Part of that was not all the time to work with them. I took the application, reminded Mr. Jordan that he needed to get the schematic two or three times a week. And that's always because I called Dr. Amathus to assist me in the...
Good afternoon, Matt.
Good afternoon, gentlemen.
We've got some discussions going on signage for Ross and Jordan's actions. He, based on the picture that was submitted after the application had actually been processed, we found out that he apparently is going to need a variance of height and a variance of foot if he does that sign. And because it was not advertised, it puts a kink in the works. And because there's a very small amount of administrative variance potential, it still probably will not reach what they have drawn. And we're trying to figure out how to address some of this without him having to pay another five hundred dollars to ask for an additional variance for height and square footage copy area? Or to pay a hundred dollars administrative fee to get the administrative variance that may or may not accomplish what he needs to do? And on top of that, we don't know how critical the sign size is, because the board may come only in four sizes, and this is the smallest of the four sizes or something like that. It may not even design to fit the square footage we're paying for.
Right, and the way I understand the situation is the application was submitted, it was not submitted complete, but it stipulated what the variances were for, jump in if I...
That's correct.
I'm on by memory.
The only variance that Mr. Jordan asked for on the sheet was for the variable message board.
Right, which means everything else would need to be per vote.
Correct.
The schematic they came later showed a higher, wider sign.
Correct.
Which is fine, which may indicate that may be what they wanted, or may be indicative of the style of the sign. It could still be the same style of sign, just a little bit shorter.
Unless, my concern is unless the variable reader board part can't be squeezed down because of some electronic engineering problems.
Right, but I think even without, I think the size of just the reader board as indicated is still within the science range. It's just the rest of it, they have to...
Yep, but it's also stipulated that the reader board cannot be more than fifty percent of the sign, and if the reader board is a larger percentage because they had to scale back to fit, now it doesn't mean the fifty percent.
Well, then all that means is unless the variance is granted, the size of the sign has to be within code. And if the reader board needs to shrink, then the reader board needs to shrink. Now, if you want to go ahead and grant additional variances, those would be valid unless challenged.
And honestly, Matt, to, I didn't know, I didn't think they had the authority to grant additional variances up for Patrick and Gretchen.
And they really don't, but sometimes that has been stretched in the past. I don't recommend that you do it certainly, that you can do that for a sign. In terms of height and size, I mean, staff puts it as two ways, this is sort of an unusual situation. One of their options was to seek commercial zoning, which would allow, bigger settlements would allow the reader board. Staff is not really supportive of commercial zoning on this part of Cypress Street, although it's sort of a mixture through there.
It's a wedge between F1 and CC, what makes sense?
But directly across the street from residential, and the use is not a commercial use, it's an institutional use. So that was one option. We recommended a variance for the reader board, and that's all that was talked about before. There was no indication of making it bigger and taller, other than the notion that the sign that was already there was pretty short and pretty small, and yet it could be larger than what was already there. There's a church down the street that has a sign that is a medium height, a medium size, and our servant wouldn't want to recommend anything taller than the one down the street. So if he wanted to go taller or bigger with a variance, then maybe that would be the upper limit.
Mr. Jordan said, he said, because Mr. Jordan said, I mean, he can sell the feet, because right now we're at six, so he can sell...
Seven feet of height?
From the ground, yeah.
Right, which is less than what you've got shown in that schematic.
Right, right.
What about the actual physical copy?
It's gonna be, it's gonna be just like the sign there, it's just gonna be up off the ground. If you go back to the picture, let me, let me show you, this, this is what you have.
The size that's up there is...
All right, this is the sign itself. It's gonna be on something from the ground, so instead of this being, it's gonna be, now it's gonna be cut a little shorter, break that sign down. But the sign will be the sign, gonna be the size of the, of the code. The code, that's what the sign is.
Without any further dimensions, that board is looking to be pretty close to four by eight, maybe slightly bigger, which is thirty-two square feet. And what he's allowed is twenty-four. So that's another... I have to rescue thirty percent of that.
Yeah, well, almost another forty percent.
Yeah. Which the variance, administrative variance is only twenty percent. So he would still have to scale back, unless we bruise the rule, so to speak, give him a little bit more, even though it was not advertised.
It was not specifically advertised.
Right, and at that point, not that I'm advocating that, I'm just, I'm just discussing, putting it out so that we can all look at it. The only downside to that is if somebody in the future comes back and says, hey, "It wasn't properly advertised, and it puts us at risk for somebody, I guess they'd have to go to Superior Court".
Yeah, it could be challenged even beyond the thirty that went down.
So there's just thirty days that it could be challenged?
Normally.
Okay, where is...
Based on a procedural thing, and I will come in, but it goes beyond that.
Where is the church that you were talking about?
It's in the pictures, I think.
Is it the one on Howard Street, the other, the other church?
It's to the east on Cypress, a little bit to the south.
Cause I know there's a church, I think, down Howard Street.
I don't know. One of the pictures we have that is known in the back. If you grant me a few minutes, I can go find a picture and print one out that shows subject property church and the sign of the other church in the back. I remember looking at the picture.
How long will it take?
Three minutes. Three minutes.
Well, if I was doing that eventually, something, um, uh, my, my, my gift right down, down the street, can I just have the same height for that again?
Maybe yes, maybe no. The problem there, we don't know what his sign is, and we don't know whether that sign was properly permitted or whether it stated by somehow. And as soon as we say, yeah, you can match his, but his isn't legal, now both of them are not legal.
And we don't know what his zoning is either, trying to fill you in this zoning category back here.
Bear with us, give us just a minute, we're not done yet. I'm, I'm gonna try not to put you in a box since you're not checking. I'm gonna try not to spend your money, and we're gonna try not to put you in a box so that...
Sir, do you know how tall the actual sign, not, not to include the monument, but the sign itself? The schematic that we have shows that you want it to be ninety-two inches wide, but the height only shows the full height from the ground to the top. It doesn't show the actual size of the sign itself.
Uh, while we raise on back, let's see what Mr. Jordan is, see if we can get him to come in here in a few, come in two minutes.
I'm, I'm probably under guessing, but I figured if it's, if it's eight foot, the base probably four. If it's seven, probably two and a half.
I, I figured it's four, roughly four by eight, which is thirty-two.
Mr. Jordan, are you being just a minute?
It hasn't been signed yet, no. Just hanging out there.
Tracy, wanna take a picture? Check room?
We'll talk about that after this.
Do business.
Well, did you get that cold from, can you keep it to yourself?
Number one, it's not a cold, it's allergies.
Eight feet.
There's something in the air.
You know how honey was trying to watch you in time to sneeze, raise your hand and...
I don't wanna get him wet. I appreciate that. I'm trying to avoid these guys getting sprayed.
We appreciate your concern for us.
Looking after the old man, you know, the root. Containment of the plague.
I guess, I'm just sorry asking if anybody's sick, so that way I know who's in the beginning of the paper.
Put me in the corner. We only did, I didn't take my Zertec. They had just... I was fine this morning.
So, so I'm just curious, okay, so do we have the administrative power to grant the whole thing?
That's, Matt said that that was a possibility, but it could be challenged.
With the thirty days?
No.
I'm afraid it would challenge, but we've at least got the idea.
But what was the thirty day period of that, if it's advertised?
And most people going to areas, either you, you work on that road, you sell that road, or you go to church on that road. There's really not a lot of traffic, you know, there.
Not, not arguably, all I'm saying is from a pure technical legal standpoint, we would be acting on something that was not advertised, and should somebody decide to question it, it would open us up and we would probably have very little defense because we took action that was not within the parameters that we had asked. And they could then throw everything we offered him out the door and it started over.
And it's a thirty day window?
If we do something that wasn't advertised, they can challenge at any time.
Oh, either on a thirty day program?
Correct, if they don't like the decision that we made on something that was advertised, they have thirty days.
Oh, that's understandable.
People that, that can challenge that on the doors that we sit in the ministry?
Anyone.
Huh?
Anybody.
Anybody. Anybody.
Yeah, the whole thing.
The church down the road, for some reason, your sign's slightly bigger, slightly taller, and he says, hey, I can't do that, but he did, how did he do that? It wasn't advertised. I think I'll hire one of the lawyers in the congregation, go down there, and they get your case thrown out, in which case you gotta turn around and come back, and we've got to revisit all this again and advertise it again. Meanwhile, they're all sitting there looking at us through a fine two magnifying glass because as soon as we act on yours, they coming down here.
Mr. Jordan, he can answer.
Good afternoon, James.
Hello.
Can I get your name and address for the record?
Okay, James Jordan, 208 Harper Street, Jordan Custom Sign.
Okay, picture.
Yes.
LED message board, are they infinitely variable in size, or do they come in set sizes?
Set sizes because of the matrix makeup of the LED units.
Okay, what is that size board?
Uh, it's thirty-one and three quarter inches by ninety-two inches.
Okay, so it is two and a half by seven and a half.
Yes.
That LED portion?
Well, the cabbages, like three quarters of the nature around it.
I guess, I apologize, I'm asking, um, where it says Crossing Jordan Baptist Church, that's an additional.
Yes.
So just the LED portion is the thirty-one and a quarter inches. So do you know what this proposed top to bottom of this sign, not the, the monument that it stands on, but the actual sign is?
Oh, not without me in front of my computer, I'm just gonna guess that if it's thirty, you're probably looking at, oh, I'm just gonna say five, five and a half.
From roundy top, what you talk about business board?
Yeah, you got thirty-one inches, not that, that other was about thirty inches.
So if we were just saying that then the part of the sign, Crossing Jordan Baptist Church, and the LED message board is five feet tall and seven feet wide, do these LED message boards come in a size smaller than seven feet across?
That's eight feet.
Not from the companies that I represent, which is two different companies. Backtronic's being one, and Think Size being another, that's kind of a standard makeup of the matrix of the LED units. Oh, you can get some indoor units smaller, like you may see in some of these store windows, but not this design for outside use.
Okay, we, we jumped in and asked a question before you had a chance. What we've got is the sign height and the sign copy area was not presented to staff as being a variance request. Therefore, the only variance that was requested was to put the read, the reader board on the sign. What has been drawn and requested now was not advertised. So it puts us in limbo to grant a larger sign than is allowed by code. And that's what we're wrestling with.
The sign that's out there now is, is basically, I think, a four by eight, thirty-two square foot, so it may be just a little bit, it's not too tall.
Right, but the four by eight is there, is actually technically too large, his grandfather didn't. But it doesn't meet code, his code says twenty-four, twenty-five, twenty-four? Twenty-four square feet.
Which is very small.
Which is very small, but, you know, the code means the code.
If we're in CC, these requirements would be seven thousand square feet and twenty-four feet tall? Yeah.
No, no worries, if it was a CC, he could put a lot bigger sign.
Without coming here and spending five hundred dollars, what you've got to spend is the money to get resulting in CC.
Okay, so now we have the information on the size of the sign, and that is pretty much locked in, to that being the minimum size. Yeah, there's Crossing Jordan. And there is a sign down there.
Sir, I'm, I'm not sure if that is, if I should even bring it up, but she mentioned wanting the, the height of the sign, where it is so that kids could come in.
Well, it was, it was somebody with a baby chest, and he wanted to get it above, and the car's parked at that car was lucky.
It's not gonna be three feet off the ground, it's, the LED's gonna start three feet off the ground.
Well, I, I may have said something that was wrong, but...
Okay, well, I just want you to know that that...
It wouldn't, it wouldn't be that high, okay?
It's, you're not going to accomplish what you're wanting to do that way.
Okay.
They'll, they'll be all over it.
Okay, have a question on the forward.
If we postpone and given the opportunity to correct their application and re-advertise for variance on height and size, then can pay the money?
We would have to re-advertise, what I would interpret in this is we would charge them, the advertising fee for the newspaper board or bank letters, signs already there, we could amend the sign. And it'd be something less than five hundred for that portion of the newspaper. So probably not a whole lot less.
Because the lending cost is there, because we get it out.
Right, and we have other cases going to the newspaper this month, so there's a little bit of economy of scale. And we don't have other zone or appeals cases, so it'd be the cost of his portion plus the preamble for your meeting. It would be a few hundred, probably three to five hundred, probably three to four hundred, something like that. We can check and see.
Do you know what your administrative variance could give him without...
The max what he can request administrative is twenty percent increase in sign area, ten percent, I'm trying.
I think you actually have...
Twenty percent area, ten percent, I'm trying. It's a low percentage.
Too much of the square footage.
Twenty, what is that saying?
Twenty, twenty percent.
So twenty-four adding another twenty percent gives you almost five feet, so it becomes roughly twenty-nine square feet.
It's still not anywhere near that, it's way over.
Yeah, and what he's got up there is...
Way over.
I mean, the width of that, not at ninety-two inches, it's way, way over.
Yeah, I think it says it was five plus copy area.
We can adjust it or whatever, but the LED and a small sign that's...
But the, the problem with that, James, I'm sorry.
Yeah, that's one thing you might not have realized or considered, or Tracy explained it, but the other option is to grant the variance for variable message board, which got a grant probably in on the sign. Swap out the panel for a variable message board, thanks to fifty percent size.
I've talked about that option.
That's one thing, that you've got a sign that's there that's thirty-two square feet, you can and you could grant the variance for the height of sign, and so you could swap out the equivalent of a half panel for variable message, but you take existing sign with its grant probably in larger area.
Oh.
You won't get the height.
We didn't talk about that.
That's one option. Now, let me add some more spice to the soup. Um, in terms of you should, you see the picture of this church and the church behind it, and I remember from driving it, you know, Cypress Street is curved just to the east of here. When you're coming west on Cypress, you're looking straight at the front yard of this church, and that sign is directly in front of you. And I don't, personally, don't see if you need or anything larger or taller because it's already very visible. If you're like coming down the street, there's no signs to compete with, there's nothing blocking your view if you're coming from east.
How much would it have cost them to do, um, zoning change this season?
It would be the same five of these, but we would also need to meet some balance with description for the property.
Were they eligible? Were they eligible here?
They are, yes.
So then the character going up.
But it may or may not get approved.
And we didn't recommend, oh, and we didn't recommend that to them because...
Well, one, it may not get approved, it's across from residential sign, and so it's silly to re-sign the property to, for the purposes of having...
Because that, that residential property is drawn by M1.
Yes. Yeah, it's a, it's a very mixed zoning pattern. You drive down Cypress Street, I mean, a part of it is, you know, not the same as Cypress Street.
Is the path that's seven, uh, the smallest sign, LED sign that you, that you're planning to have?
Well, the, the size was actually thirty-something inches by, by seven, but that's about the smallest you're gonna get, unless you get something custom made, but I don't even, the two companies I represent do not make any custom for outdoor use.
Thirty inches by seven feet is two and a half by seven.
Thank you, Martin.
We say thirty inches by seven feet?
Yes.
Right, so two is half eight times seven, which is seventeen and a half square feet. Roughly half of the thirty-two square foot sign.
Okay, so if we, if we don't make the variable message board make only approximately more than fifty percent, because they're actually going to be more than fifty percent, we'll say sixty percent, can't be more than sixty percent, and they replace it on their non-conforming sign, then they could just take down the part that's, the letters that they're putting out there now, use their same top piece on their same posts, and put a variable message bolted on in there.
As part of, right.
And that's a standard sign that, that wouldn't be imposing an undue cost to them?
We could, we could add something to the end, but my question to them is, would you spend that kind of money on a heavy message board on a foundation you're not sure of, you know?
Similar to, it doesn't have to be exactly, but instead of being on a monument, second post, we have drawn to have it on what's there, like, like what's there now, two posts on the side, so that their top sign that they have would be the same.
And if you add a monument support to it, that doesn't change the sign, the area, or shape or configuration, that should still be, okay?
Okay.
So it, it could be... Frank, you post it.
If I were your host, I would like to modify my motion.
I'd like to say that.
How long, do you have one second?
You know, we've got these rules for aesthetic purposes, to make things attractive in neighborhoods. Here you've got this beautiful, modern church. The current sign that they have does not fit with the new church. The new sign that they're proposing looks like it goes with this new beautifully maintained church, and yet we're wanting to take an old sign and add to it. Isn't that what we're talking about possibly doing, which seems like it defeats the purpose of the aesthetic part?
Technically, what we're doing is saying the new sign cannot be any bigger than the existing old sign.
We're basically replacing part of, of the panel of the old sign.
And if they, if they re-engineer and put it on a single post in the center, instead of two posts on the outside, as long as it is same place, same basic sign, same basic... As long as it is same place, same basic size, same basic height and everything else, then they can live with that.
Replacing a thirty-two square foot panel with one that is half LED.
Is this going to look attractive with the church?
That's a workable deal.
And it's gonna look and keep it with the church?
Yeah.
Because the church is one of the nicest assets in the neighborhood. I mean, you can talk about residential, but the residential does not compare to what they've done as far as this church.
I think the sign that's there is pretty attractive.
Okay.
If there's no further discussion, we have a motion on the floor from Ms. Cortemon, and she wants to, uh, amend it slightly.
I would like to make a motion that we approve the variance to replace the existing sign, variable message portion, with a digital LED variable message portion, where the variable message portion can occupy no more than seventy-five percent of the existing total copy of the sign. We're gonna replace the bottom half, because Crossing Jordan is sort of little at the top, they have that big message board at the bottom. So, we're gonna replace it with something that's, an LED sign, and it's not gonna take up more than seventy-five percent.
Stay with it, same height and size.
Same, within the same size they have now, four by...
Same size, same height.
Four by five.
Okay, that is the motion.
Is that with a new foundation, or is that utilizing existing?
Foundation can be anything you want.
Okay.
Correct.
We're talking about sign, total height, sign copy, total copy.
So, you're still, you're thirty-two square foot and whatever the existing height is of the sign now?
Because what you got is grandfathered in, otherwise, it's gotta be six foot. Unless they want to apply for administrative variance, at which point they could probably get slightly over seven feet.
But the sign's already too big for the code, that works against it. But they always would have the option in the future of seeking another variance approval for something bigger or taller.
Or rezoning, because it's not a character area.
Okay, we have a motion on the floor, do we have a second?
Second.
I have a second for Mr. Alvarado, I heard him before, heard you then. All in favor, raise a hand. Unanimous, thank you very much for all of your time trying to weigh through this.
Thank you.
Thank you, make it look good, please.
All right.
Okay, there is my agenda that I did print, print. Okay, approval of minutes, I read them, didn't see anything, anybody else see something, I missed it. Can I get a motion to accept the minutes as presented? Motion, Mr. Alvarado, second please. I have a second, Katrina, all in favor, raise a hand. Unanimous, thank you very much. Last thing before we move on, this is what is being proposed, information wise, maybe for the globe, maybe not.
That's just a template that I kind of come up with, um, is this how big it's gonna be? Not sure, no, it's not gonna be that big. I just did it big enough for me.
Somebody will walk and shine, boy. Running back, so when you walk in.
Add information we can, if you want to take away, we can, um, we're gonna have those, those made, I believe, um, well, actually, chief, police chief.
Chief Childress. And honestly, they're probably gonna look more like my ID without your height and weight and, I don't know, your, your middle of your stomach. Without your height and weight, um, they're gonna look very similar to mine. They're gonna have your full name, they're gonna have your expiration date, your, with your term ends.
Photographs.
Right, and that you are a Loudoun County slash state of all offices, I mean, water appeals.
They say all interior.
Okay, nobody have problems with any of that?
A headshot.
Headshot.
You know, we can hit that today and we'll be on our way.
I can just send you one? You can send anyone, sure, I can take one, you can send anyone, whatever, but I've got my paper, if you'd like to see me after, I'll thank you much, y'all.
You have mine saved already, right?
Yeah, don't make that face, Paul.
Okay. Everybody all right for the day? Yes, I'm, I'm, what's made of?
We have some, yeah, it's coming up.
Yeah, the city has one, and you've got one.
August.
County officials don't do this quarterly, so, um, the terms expire in July.
Uh, Matt's, um, expire in August. We'll probably start that process, maybe June.
Mine, mine's in July.
Did you reapply?
This is in July.
You have to reapply, man.
Yes, it's in July.
He didn't wanna join us again, that's why he didn't reapply? No one told him. Well, it's my understanding, he's been told now, if you want to stay with us, please reapply, because they're gonna have to re-advertise, because according to Tracy, nobody...
Now, county appointee, we had Nancy's the city appointee, and that has been advertised, it's on the agenda for this week, but no reply. It has to be an attorney.
Well, that was my next question, has anything been worked out?
Right, and so what the city's wanting to do is re-advertise for their council meeting in June. Possibly July, but I think June.
Okay, but that still didn't solve if Nancy wanted to reapply.
Well, the city seat, she's not eligible. Of course, we had this back and forth with one attorney.
Right.
And what we talked about, doing this fixing it, so one city appointee and one county appointee are each attorneys. There's always gonna be an attorney here, it's more likely. And that, we don't have to worry about this back and forth sort of thing.
When, when, when John replaced Laverne, he should've been replaced, I mean, that should've been the attorney.
She was not the designated attorney appointee, Paul was, as a county member. See, then, the term before that, when the two seats came up, Paul went from being a city appointee to a county appointee.
What do I need to do?
I'm confused.
Now, the flip side is, is the city would appoint Paul to be a city appointee, and Nancy goes back to be the county appointee.
Let's just do that.
And that's just sort of silly to do that, because if one government doesn't follow suit, then you've got a one-term person, and, you know, it's just a problem.
What do you recommend that we do?
Each government have one attorney appointee, so we don't have to worry about the type of person in the seat, whether it's an attorney or not. And then, we always have at least one attorney here. So, it takes the pressure off of you, being the only attorney, but you've got to be here in every meeting to be the attorney of the board.
Especially when I'm sick.
Exactly, exactly. So, then, we, with two people, we have a much better chance of having legal representation.
I got a question. What do I sign?
See her.
Bella.
So, would that then put Nancy to where she was not eligible to be on the board?
That's right.
Will that then...
For this appointment, right. We told her, don't go very far, or else we'll come find her.
Well, I was not, I was not going to, I just, in October, it's just, life's just busy right now. So, she can take my place so that there, and finish out my term.
That's weird.
That's something y'all can figure out, or, you know, they don't have to decide that now, but there's no guarantee. Yeah, and she's a city appointee, if she resigns, then the city council's got to vote and replace, vote on a replacement. Which hopefully would be Nancy, but it could be someone else.
Yeah, they might have somebody else in place.
Yeah, exactly, there's no guarantee of any of this.
We might juggle ourselves too much here.
You know, we also have one of you in the public office, which if they win, that becomes another issue, that we have to replace them.
We're on the record.
So, there's a lot of ifs.
So, wait, wait, we're on the record.
We're, we're technically there, and I'm shutting this off, but we're trying to talk about this at the same time, so it's not in the recording.